In favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Was that, I just noticed our light, did that go on the record?
Marco, what did you see?
Um, just, just now, all I heard was all in favor.
Do I need to open it again? Uh, could I have another motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the meeting.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Great, thank you. Um, uh, just to remind everybody, we'll implement our procedural resolution tonight. Your applicants get 10 minutes to speak, the public gets three minutes. We can allow additional time at the discretion of the board. Uh, so does anybody have any corrections for the minutes of the July 16th meeting?
No. No, uh, well, I, I sent an email because the discussion on 156 Main Street had been cut off in the minutes.
It wasn't actually cut off, it was you guys made a, made a motion to adjourn it and then you guys started to talk about it. If you, if you.
So further up in the minutes, okay, all right, okay, thank you.
You're, you were talking about Division Street, the 152, it's getting confused. 152, but Divis- two Divi-
You said 152 Division though.
You mean 152 Division, correct? Uh, the solo, okay, yes, we did, we did adjourn that. Okay, so could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 16th, 2024 meeting?
So move.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great, thank you. Uh, next, we have some correspondents requiring action for 152 Hampton Street. They're requesting a one-year extension of their approvals or their variances. Could I have a motion to approve a one-year extension?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great. Um, under old business, uh, one note to make, uh, 156 Main Street has withdrawn their application. Uh, next on the agenda is 41 Redwood Road, 26 Cove Road. And I understand the applicant wants us to adjourn.
Yeah, I think that's the agreement.
Okay, but we have members of the, of the public here, do any members of the public want to speak to this? Or do you want to wait until they're actually here to respond?
I would like to speak.
Okay, sure, that's fine. Just state your name and address for the record.
Uh, John Hart, I'm Charlie Lester. Rep. Son, the neighborhood example.
Great.
So the application has been before you for 16 months. And every, this is not the first time they've asked for an adjournment after we've prepared to come or actually been here. Like request, uh, was made as I walked into the door. And, um, I came here, Sam, the neighbors, Sheldon Ryan, all you board members who showed up here for that, it's just being on. Uh, we would ask that, you know, in December, you told the applicant that the house would do this. Not only is the house still the exact same house, I think, proposed before the board, but it's essentially the same house that was proposed to you 16 months ago. You told it was too big in December, since then, it's been eight months. You were prepared to deny it, I shouldn't speak for you, I think you were prepared to deny it in December. That exact same application before you now. In December, the reason for not making a decision was that they had provided some comps that they said were comparable to what they're asking for. Those addresses have been given to the board, I have written letters suggesting those comps are not comparables. So I don't think there's any information that you're lacking to make a decision on this application. And just as, as pretty private neighbors, we would just somehow not have to keep this on our own. You know, every month, we're never given notification, new materials are submitted. So it's a lot of pressure on the neighbors for 16 months to constantly try to keep up with an application. Find out if they're beyond, and then again, this is just the last thing is to, to not adjourn until we all made our way here. So we would ask that the board, how they consider it, respectful.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna let Liz address your comment.
John knows, this is the process. I mean, this, this is the process, they can ask for an adjournment. The board has never said no to an adjournment before. The goal is typically that an adjourn, that an adjournment will allow an applicant to change their plans or hear feedback from the board and make changes accordingly. Um, or for them to get updated surveys or plans to the board to make a decision. Um, I believe that saying no to adjournment, it's almost interfering in due process. So I think they have a right to be heard as an applicant, they have a right to change their application before the board. Um, the board did not have a set policy that had been adopted, that it can only carry an application for a year or two. That's not the policy of this board, so that's all I'm saying.
I mean, we've had some applications that have gone on for a very long time.
Sometimes for commercial applications, you have to do secret, it's adjourned to planning, and then go secret, it can take years.
Yeah. I, I know, I understand.
As important as it is for neighbors to pay attention, that's the process.
Yeah, I understand the, the frustration, but.
Situation where the board is being, I mean, the process is being somewhat manipulated. I, I understand that argument. I think the board also may have granted adjournments in the past, but it's not, the board is not prohibited from making a decision on application just because the applicant, hey, don't make a decision. Like you do have it within your power, they want you to make a decision on the application.
They always have that, that authority. But like I said, applicants have an opportunity to change their applications before this board all the time, to treat this application differently. I think would expose the board unnecessarily to liability under that notion, like, why would we do that?
Well, they're not requesting, they're not requesting for that application.
All applicants get treated the same before this board. It's very important.
Well, Alex, you had a comment?
Well, my only comment is I very much understand the frustration of the neighbors, 16 months of trying to follow what's going on. They don't know what's happening, doesn't seem to be much movement, doesn't seem to be much changes. I understand the frustration very well. And I've just wondering, Liz, is there anything short of directing the applicant to do X, Y, or Z that is permissible? I'd like, I'd like to say to the, to the applicant, listen, you've been here for 16 months. Uh, that's your right, that's your pro, that's the process and so on. But we encourage you to either kind of suspend it or adjudicate it for six months. If that's what you're gonna do, that's what you need. But when you come back, come back with substantive changes, because otherwise you're just kinda wasting our time, wasting everybody.
You can say that to individual applicants that don't record the boards, but I think for you to have something like that, to treat this applicant that way, you would need to have a policy that you would adopt. Like a general policy, not for specific applicants, for a specific application.
Yeah, and I'm not meaning to.
But adopt a policy and, and by resolution, you can adopt a policy on which the board has a policy, um, but not with respect to adjournments. And you wouldn't say, you know, we're only gonna allow you to adjourn an application for a year or a year and a half, and then it's unreasonable if you expect us to carry that in on our agenda any further. I think you would be well within the laws of you that. But at this point in time, this application, uh, specifically is asked for an adjournment. You've granted every adjournment requested by every other applicant before you.
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting we deny the adjournment. And I'm not even specifically talking about this particular applicant.
No, in a general, yes.
I'm talking more generically, like, what do you do when we have an applicant that's here, kind of year after year?
I know other boards have done that in the past, that I've represented, created a policy where they don't want to carry, you know, um, applications on their agenda for more than a certain amount of time.
Yeah, or just ask them to adjourn indefinitely, or resubmit, or take a six-month, you know, adjournment or something so the public can follow a little bit more easily.
Yeah, we're frustrated, but we get it.
What about a time where you have, a time where you have to adjourn it 48 hours in advance of the meeting, unless there are proven extenuating circumstances? And then interested parties could check with the building department to see if the agenda that's been publicized is still that agenda? I mean, to do it, to do.
Check the hours ago, it was still out of the, as we walked the door.
Well, almost, almost.
Multiple applicants today, right?
Yes, but almost every applicant waits, they, they only wait till the last minute to adjourn.
Can't we set a, a time today?
Why not?
For the future, pass a motion.
They always wait till the last minute.
But realistically, then what's gonna happen? So you pass a, you, you adopt a policy for the timing issue, where you can only get an adjournment if you submit it 24 hours ahead of time? But then realistically, what are you gonna do? The applicant is not here, you're gonna adjourn it anyway. I mean.
Or remove it.
Well, can, can I just suggest, rather than having a big debate about now, that this might be something that this board should take up?
Well, we should discuss it in an executive session, I mean, because we have procedural resolutions and we can make an, an additional one and add it to the procedural.
All the other applications in my memory that have gone on this long, there was substantial discussion that almost with, I, there's only one exception I can think of. Substantial discussion and things radically changed over the course of maybe a year.
Yeah.
Um, this one is just on and on and on, and nothing ever changes.
Right.
Yeah.
They don't want, they don't want to give up. All right, so let's have a separate discussion, could be something, but.
I think we give them a reasonable proposal to balance the interests of both the applicant and the public at large.
There's sort of, I think part of the mission here is to wear out anybody that might not be in favor of this, including us.
Well, they can't wear us out.
We, we can't.
No, but they can wear.
That's not gonna happen.
They can.
I, I think we appreciate, at least you got the justice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But thanks a lot.
Great. Uh, could you state your name and address for the record?
Drew Hart, uh, 21 Cove Road, I'm also a member of the Land Board. Not speaking on behalf of that board tonight. I would just like to add, even with the applicant not here, we sent in a letter to this board, I hope everyone reviewed it. The applicant has not listened to the board over the 16 months. They have not made any changes that the board has suggested in 16 months. I've been here every single meeting. It's pretty clear, if you can read the drawings, which all of you can. The building hasn't gotten smaller, in many ways it's gotten bigger. It's manipulation of the site. They're trying to pull a fast one on the board. They're definitely trying to wear out everyone that's here. It would not be out of this world to tell the applicant that they are not able to make reasonable changes. We have to put it to a vote. It's fine for it's going for three years if they're working with the board. Any board can work with one for five years and get an approval. If not work with the board, it's just a no. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Uh, is there anyone else? Uh, is there anyone on Zoom?
Uh, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn over at our next meeting, it's September 17th.
Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn 41 Redwood Road, 26 Cove Road to our September, what is it, 17th, 17th meeting?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is 63, thank you, thank you for your comments.
They also requested an adjournment.
Okay, so could I have a motion to adjourn 63 Main Street to our September 17th meeting?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great, thank you. Next is 203 Madison Street.
203 Madison Street, we've also requested an adjournment, we're, uh, working with the current board right now.
Could I have a motion to adjourn 203 Madison Street to our September 17th meeting?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
This suspense is killing me, I don't have any.
I haven't heard, I, I reached out to them to see what, to see what, you know, the last people. They were submitting a letter to the trustees, but I haven't heard anything more, so I don't know if you wanna second call this.
I thought, I thought at the last meeting that he spoke at, that when Liz told him the, uh, effect of having it turned down versus withdrawing it, that he said he would withdraw it.
No, in the end, he, he, yeah, in the end, he decided to adjourn it. Um, is there anyone, is he, cause he usually appears on Zoom, is he, is there any, is not out there?
And I reached out, um.
Okay.
This morning.
So we'll just adjourn it. So could I have a motion to adjourn 152 Division Street to our, um, September 17th meeting?
So move.
Second? All in favor?
Hi.
Great.
Four, four.
Um, I guess the other thing that we could do with a procedural resolution is the, the adjournments where people don't show up, because we've had a number of those, where nobody shows up for months and months and months.
Right, so that's again, how long you wanna count.
Carry some, right, and that could be something that we add, yeah. Great. Uh, next on the agenda is 4 Notre Dame Road.
Okay.
Hi.
We've got a winner.
Great. Could you state your name and address?
When for permits, 288 East Bonneville Highway, Kansas City, New York, on behalf of the applicants.
Great, are you an attorney?
I am not.
Okay. Um, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you, you can proceed.
This application was before you, uh, the June 18th meeting, where we ran through everything, I mean, the board was satisfied with all the, our, quote, approval. Um, there was missing one notice at that meeting for a side yard setback. Uh, the swimming pool, it just in the front yard. So we have read this, and then the back of the board, I think. Any other questions? Otherwise, it could be that it's, it was stuffed, lax vision, and dressed, I think, as, be open for the second notice and.
Hey, thank you. Um, any board members have questions?
Nope, we accepted it.
Yeah, just for the decision purposes.
I was supposed to have a decision ready today, so I apologize.
Oh, so you, you are, I was gonna review some of the language that made this one unusual, but you already have the decision, so you don't.
No, I don't, so please.
Oh, no, we had said at the time that because the pool fits into the footprint of the house, that it, it's, that if, that the, the, uh, setback from the property line is more acceptable than it might be if the pool was just sitting out all by itself in the backyard. It, so that this probably would represent much less of a precedent to the extent.
Right.
That there, that it even would be a precedent.
Yeah, just continues lines of the deck.
Decision, it would be, so somebody's plowing through it a year from now, they would say, oh, well, our pool doesn't fit that, so.
It's a continuing the line of the house.
Continue the line of the house, yeah, I didn't, I didn't just put that properly.
And just to review, also, the pool equipment is under the deck, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. So any other comments from the board?
No, I don't, we, that's time.
Is there anyone from the public that wants to speak?
No.
To 4 Notre Dame Road? Hey, so could I have a motion to close the public hearing on 4 Notre Dame Road?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great. Um, so, um, basically, we are in favor of this decision?
Yes.
So could I have a motion to, uh, have our attorney write a favorable decision for 4 Notre Dame Road?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So you don't wanna come back, they'll, they'll, the decision at the next meeting, and they'll send it. Thank you, it's been nice.
Great, thank you. So next on the agenda, we have decisions. And the first decision is 20 Henry Street.
This is to request an application to construct a new swimming pool and pool equipment at 27 Henry Street. The lot, um, is 5,092 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required. Uh, the board reviewed this application during the process of reviewing the application, the, the applicant introduced the size of the pool hereby eliminating, um, the, the, um, block coverage request, variance for leave that required, and also reducing some of the setbacks that they required. Um, and for the reasons set forth in the determination, more determined through grant variance, with one, um, board that require in opposition, opposed to the decision.
Great, could I have a motion to approve the decision for 20 Henry Street as written?
So move.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Great.
Next application for decision is 43 Bluff Point Road. And this was an application to construct, versus some story additions, who creates new non-conforming residents. Um, in our 20 zoning district, the lot was 1,900 square feet, and it actually fronts on Morris Cove. So it's a waterfront lot. Um, the applicant reviewed the application with the board, and the board found that it met the five-part test, should have used the fourth dimension variation, or vice versa, to grant the variance request.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the decision for 43 Bluff Point Road as written?
So move.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi. Sure.
Um, that's the end of decisions. So, uh, since we're very short, do we wanna go into an executive session to discuss procedural resolution about, um?
Well, no. I was looking at it, yes.
So could I have a motion to go in?
We can go in with executive, send me to get legal advice.
Okay, well.
Or litigation or personnel back.
Right, so that's, that's legal advice. Can I get a, a motion to go into an executive session to discuss and get legal advice?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great.
Can I just suggest before we start that we just identify what the one, two, three, or four?
Second.
Second.